I guess we're gonna go ahead and get started with the carousel meeting. And two of the boards here do have a forum, so first thing we need to do is the boards call what's on their order, and I'm gonna call the Prudential Committee to order.
I'll call the Westford School Board to order.
And I'll call the U-46 School Board to order.
So not on the agenda is an opportunity, since not everyone is here right now, to steal a few minutes and recognize some folks that will no longer be in service to us next year. So at this time, on behalf of the boards and the administrative team that's here tonight, we have Deb Robbins, HR, Amy Cole, Strategic and Assessment, Aaron McGuire, Support Services, Big Scimillo, Technology Director. And board members that are here give me an opportunity to say a few kind words and voice our appreciation to Grant Eisler for his service. I'll begin with several of your fellow leaders provided us with words of appreciation. We'd like to share with you tonight some of those words as you depart to continue your career. Do not forget the admiration and respect you have given here at CCSU. One administrator said, "Grant has been a huge help to me during my first few years here, both personally and professionally." Another person stated, "I will miss his attention to detail and dependability, but always his caring personality and sneaky sense of humor." He has spent many hours explaining and re-explaining the nuances of building a sustainable and responsible budget. He is able to hear and see the kids' side of this work and always willing to work tirelessly to find a way to meet the needs of our building. He'll always be remembered for his kindness and patience, and I will be forever grateful. He has continuously impressed me with his patience for all the questions, his awesome problem-solving skills, his tireless work ethic, building budgets, and the many board meetings and his contributions to all we do in CCSU. We appreciate Grant's continuous focus on making this better as ever present. Those shoes are gonna be hard to fill, and I'm thankful for all of the sustainable systems he has built. He'll be remembered for his compassion for students that is forever present. Grant, thank you for your 10 years of leadership within CCSU. You have made a difference to our schools, students, and communities. You will be greatly missed. Best wishes to you and your new endeavors in Montpelier. They will be gaining a great leader. And just a few words that I wanted to mention as far as appreciation for the work ethic, the professional work ethic you've established. It's been an example for all educational leaders and exemplifies the core value of service above self. You're always poised and confident and demonstrated the ability, time and time again, to translate complex data into easily understood information. I appreciate the fact you've been approachable, your strong communication skills, and the support of all our colleagues. You give what it takes to get the job done and still maintains positive worldview and sense of humor. You've been a true leader with exceptional management skills and an analytic aptitude. You're approachable and extremely conscientious and gifted with a unique quality of family seeing extremely hard work and adding a little levity to relieve stress within the team. You've brought great pride to CCSU. On behalf of the board, the administrative team, I'd like to present you with the golden apple. As well as a parting gift.
Actually, I really do wanna say thank you to Judy for hiring me 10 years ago. I was straight from the Air Force, had no experience in school business management, so it was a big risk. And I said I'd saw myself being here for 10 years, and so it's been 10 years, but very much appreciative of the opportunity. And to the board members, you've been fantastic to work for. I mean, I hear my colleagues all the time talking about nightmares with interactions and board meetings, and it's always truly been a pleasure, and I appreciate the kindness and respect that you've shown to me. And my hat's off to you for the service that you give to the community and to the kids. Thank you, and I will always remember this place.
See if I can do the second one. The other person we'd like to recognize tonight is Lori Singer, Principal of ADL for the past 10 years. I started saying, hmm, after 10 years of service. Grant and Lori both decided to move on. Again, leaders across CCSU have provided words of appreciation for you as well. We'd like to share those with you, and as you get ready to move toward a retirement full of family, friends, travel, and much joy, hopefully you'll think back on these words of appreciation. One colleague said, "Lori made the dream of one-to-one computing a reality at ADL. I learned so much from her in that process." Another one said she led the way in standards-based learning and was very gracious in sharing her expertise. Another one said she can always be counted on to support fellow administrators. And another person said what I will miss most about Lori is her candor and compassion. Lori's passion for middle school education is unmatched. She is deeply knowledgeable in her leadership of this work. Another administrator said, "Thank goodness for Lori's continued work toward improvement around supervision and evaluation. She even shared her own Google site as a model of S&amp;E for leaders with all of us." Lori goes above and beyond for students. I will remember her for specific efforts she has made to connect with students who need supports to succeed. And finally, Lori has supported me through so much, I will miss her tremendously as a colleague. May her retirement be restful and joyous after an amazing career. And just a few words again, in the month of July 2006, I was thrilled to see an application come through for Lori Singer for the position of ADL. She's vision-based, and her student-centered leadership framework held great promise for our students and the potential for future and more expansive leadership roles. She's a powerful communicator. She knows the power of words and uses them to mobilize beliefs into actions and ideals into realities. She's demonstrated through her willingness to take on additional responsibilities. Educational Leadership Team, she was research current teacher in Principal Evaluation Systems and remains committed to supporting the Supervisory Union as we approach shifting to new systems. She was instrumental in serving on the ELT multi-tiered system of supports task team and evaluating our current systems of support upon this framework. She knows and understands the need to embrace systems to leverage opportunities for students, while her sense of urgency to create systemic change is unique and unyielding. She's also been working to support her staff with training new student data management system and standards-based reporting systems. Lori is always resourceful, and she brings humor and empathy to the most challenging situations and manageable. She is a leader with a desire and passion in creating learning environments where all learners find themselves on a path of continuous improvement. You will be sorely missed, and your leadership has been greatly appreciated. And at this time, we'd like to present you with a parting gift on behalf of the boards and the leadership team.
I echo everything that Grant said. It's just been such an opportunity to be able to work with so many incredible people. Some of you sitting around this table right now, I started with even when I was at Essex High School as an assistant principal, and it was quite a journey to look them all the way through here to 2016, so I want to thank you very, very much. And poor Grant, we started at the same time, and yes, I do have some powers of persuasion and way to communicate. And just one quick story, poor Grant, the first year he was there, came over and thought we were just going to talk about getting a new exit door in the library for handicap exit. Only I had already realized that when he came that I was going to present him with his grandiose plan to redo the entire library. So the poor man walked into the library and totally dazzled him with the proposals, and by the time he left, he said, "Well, send me some information." I know, the next summer, we had a brand-new library, so thank you. But thank you very much, everybody. And Judy, thank you for those kind words.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Also, joining us tonight, and I wanted all board members to be introduced to the next Principal of ADL. We have Jennifer Wood in the audience. Jennifer, if you could just stand up. Jennifer comes to us from the Franklin Central Supervisory Union, where she was Principal of a pre-K8 school in Fairfield. And we're excited to have her join our team, so there's a new face on our administrative team. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me.
And she'll be here to join the PC board as we begin the transition. And then also, we have a new board member, a new Prudential Committee board member, Patrick Murray, who has taken the opening vacated by Tim Kemmerer, so we have seated him, and he's gone through the orientation, and he's ready to go to support the work of the PC in the coming months, and we really look forward to having his service.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. I appreciate it, and I really appreciate the opportunity as well. I'm excited, kinda looking for a way to join and get involved in several other openings that I've applied for in the town and with the Prudential Committee as well, but persistence, as usual, pays off. Thank you for joining us.
Before I forget, were there any visitors that would like to speak to all three boards at once? Okay, just wanted to make sure. CCSU Board Meeting Update?
That's probably gonna be Mark providing that update. The minutes have been included in your ordinance if there's any questions that you have. We approved the final budget, so that work is done, and...
Oh, I didn't even know the officers were to come here.
And we could announce that Mark Draba is going to be the Chair of the CCSU Board, serving as Vice Chair is Michael Smith of the Prudential Committee, and serving as clerk is Ryan Donahue from U-46.
And then we also agreed, well, just a few minutes ago, to have Ben continue as our minute taker for the CCSU slash carousel meetings for the rest of, for this next school year.
I supported that adversely.
As I have before. And as, yes, as all clerks before you. Okay, so a quick update on the Essex-Westford School District Board?
So the board is meeting twice a month, on the first and third Tuesdays. I think we've had to alter that schedule once for April vacation, but generally, those are the dates so far we have been meeting here. I expect that in fall, we'll do some meetings where we go from school to school, and then after that, we'll have to decide. Our meetings are being covered by RETN now, so it is possible to watch them. I think the best way to get information about the board's work is to go to the blog. And if you just do, if you just do ewsd.org, I think it takes you straight to the blog. And Keely Shell has done a wonderful job of keeping that blog updated with minutes, announcements, upcoming events, and so forth. The board has adopted a set of guiding principles that we will use as we make decisions, and those guiding principles can also be found on the blog. We, as I think most of you know, we hired a project manager, Dan French, to coordinate the work between Judy and Mark. They have separate areas of responsibility, and it's just really helpful to have Dan coordinating that. And he came and met with us at a recent meeting to talk about governance models. At each meeting, we receive an update from Mark and Judy about the transition and how that's going. The board has divided its work according and appointed some task teams. The four task teams are Communication, Policy, Negotiations, and Superintendent's Search. And those are really the four major areas of the board's work. So I think that's what I would say for now. I would urge you to go to the blog if you're interested in keeping up on what we're doing. You can read the minutes and see materials, et cetera, there.
Is the board name?
Questions? Pardon?
What's the official board name? Is it the Essex-Westford School District or is it Westford Educational?
Well, we've been calling it that for the purpose of setting up addresses and stuff. It's technically the Essex-Westford Educational Community Unified Union School District.
So that is still the official name? It hasn't changed?
Yes.
Okay.
We've shortened it for the purpose of setting up email addresses and blog addresses.
We have that domain name of EWSD, so if you type that in, it directs you to what Mark does send.
And maybe someday it'll come.
I think we also have a number 51.
Yeah, that's true.
Maybe someday.
I think it also makes meetings shorter, not having to say the whole thing every meeting. Okay, well, I am going to turn the meeting over to Mark, since he's here now.
Apologies for my clerical error tonight. I'm here for the number eight topic.
You are in for eight, and Amy Cole is available to provide assessment back to us.
And I see that's a five-minute update, so a five-minute update. Essentially, we cannot share any data with you yet. It's embargoed until June 20th. So if you remember, Monday was part of our balance assessment consortium, was our state assessment for English Language Arts and Math. It's computer adaptive. It's a three-month window, so this is a very different process than kneecap. The window opened March 15th, and we're in the process of just sort of catching those last couple of kiddos for makeups. We receive the data as each student sort of submits it. 10 days later, we get the results, so we've been every day logging on to see which schools are finished. We made the decision that we are close enough that we're gonna be sending home our individual student reports on June 15th, and after June 20th, we'll have preliminary district and school-level data, with the caveat that the state gives us that things happen over the summer, things in the census may change, students may move, and they're gonna do a little bit of cleaning up. But by and large, we'll know by June 20th when we do, and we'll be able to come back to you in the fall with some results. And it sounds like the state is gonna be producing statewide results either August or September. I've kind of heard both of those. It's a massive undertaking. I give credit to the building leaders who managed to pull this off. It is, every student sits in front of a computer for a variety of hours, depending on which grade level, grades three through eight and one grade in high school. That involves computer support, that involves headphones for kids, knowing which students need accommodations and modifications, and text as speech turned on. So really, the credit to getting this done and as smoothly as it went goes to your building principals. And I'll open it up if you want to comment in terms of your experience of year two versus year one.
I think for us, it went smoothly. It went well last year. Last year, we did not test all at the same time. We felt like it didn't have quite the same seriousness of, we're all doing this at the same time, this is important, we're all in it together. So this year, we did it all at the same time, and that to be preferable in terms of the climate in the building. All the pieces that Amy mentioned are really not the difficult ones. The difficult ones, I think when people were devising the S-Back system, is there's this lovely thing called the Performance Task Team, which requires that there be a discussion between the teacher and students before they can do a task, and it's about a 30-minute process that has to take place for both math and for literacy. It's great when the students are there. When they're absent, trying to figure out how to do that as a makeup is really problematic. And I can only imagine what it was like at the high school level. It wasn't so bad for us, for 300, 40, whatever kids, but I can't imagine trying to do it for as many that we'll have to do here at the high school. And that's a piece of the assessment that I think folks will have to look at. There's gotta be a better way to do that particular piece of the assessment. But the rest of it, even though it was time-consuming, was very doable. It was very doable.
Sue Ann or Bob were up?
I'd just say that the second year was more intentional about the makeups because of Lori mentioning the Performance Task, because you have to have, obviously, a trained adult, and on makeup day, most of your teachers who are part of the Performance Task are teaching classes, so you really have to be intentional and schedule students tightly to get that made up. So that's, for me, the big difference between year two and year one.
At the Tech Center, we have a unique little twist in that we're testing for our sending high school. So we're one of only two centers this year that tested students for S-Back. So the twists are, we share a database, and every time we load the database, if the sending school hasn't taken those students off their roster, they automatically upload that roster, they take them off our, they take our shared students off the database. So we ran into a couple of situations where students were sitting in front of computers but did not have access to the test because an unaware adult trying to do the right thing had reloaded their database at the sending high school without excluding the shared students, and so a lot of running around, phone calls, radios, upstairs, downstairs, but successful, we got all of our students, but three tested.
The third thing I add is it's a major undertaking for the IT department and onsite and available in keeping us up and running. Somebody from Amy's office there in our building, Yama Camby, tested, and that was crucial to keep us going through the test and up and running.
Erin, did you go in, Amy? So different world, you know, boxes used to show up. We don't have boxes. We have two weeks, we assess kids. It's a different world, assessing using this way. I feel really lucky in that we have the N-Tech integration specialists that support our buildings, as Suzanne mentioned, our IT department making sure that everything was up and running, and so grateful that you've invested in Educational Assessment Manager who was literally training the Summit teachers on the S-Back when she got the phone call from CTE that 12 kids were missing on the database and was trying to sort of problem-solve that with sending schools. So all of those resources, I think, and the leadership of the school made it go as smoothly as possible. We did not have, we didn't experience the kind of political pushback that we have seen in other states around parent refusal, and so that was always a nice thing as well. The students handled it pretty well. Any questions? See you at your next year.
Thank you very much, Amy. All right, we're on to number nine on the agenda, Stress and Trauma Presentation.
I'm right there with that.
What can you create less of each?
So Aaron McGuire and I attended a full-day presentation on trauma-informed schools, and we thought it was important at this juncture of time to share some of our learning so that we had a collective understanding of the issue of trauma and stress. So this is our learning report for tonight, and Aaron's gonna start with creating a context, and then I'll add in.
Thanks. I think it's also worth noting, many of you are familiar with the multi-tiered system of support assessments that we do. We did a baseline, we are in the process of doing our second year of assessment, and this is a really important part of that body of work that we're doing, so we're sharing one component, and you'll see some context as we go through. You know, first, I think we just wanted to talk about the importance of students and children experiencing trauma and toxic stress, and really, ultimately, right now, the CDC is recognizing those experiences as public health concerns. There's been quite a bit of research done in reference to the relationship between toxic stress and trauma and long-term health impact, and people are really starting to see this as a public health issue. It's also worth noting that there has been a steep rise in the number of children going into DCF custody in Vermont, and it's important to know that about 68% of children going into custody right now are under the age of six. The data shows that the more adverse family experiences a child has, then the more significant impact on them in reference to health, education, and long-term well-being. And as I'm sure all of you are well aware, there is a significant increase in the opiate challenges that are happening right now in our state, and that is creating an increase in the number of students who are experiencing these kinds of circumstances. When we think about the impact of trauma on children, specifically six months to five years old, and they're exposed to three or more AFEs, which stands for Adverse Family Experiences, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in a moment. There are, I think, 14 different types of experiences that kids experience that fall into those categories. They start to not show affection, they're challenged in being curious, they smile and laugh a lot less, and also really struggle with bouncing back quickly. The impacts of trauma and toxic stress continue into school age, and it's really important to know that when young children and older children and people generally, when they experience significant trauma or toxic stress, it actually changes the wiring in the brain. And so because of those neurological changes, it actually takes treatment to sort of rewire what might have happened based on a traumatic experience. And even if children's experience around toxic stress or trauma stop, let's say at the age of three, unless treated well, those neurological connections that are wired during those experiences can continue on, and we see that in the circumstances for children as they come into school when that hasn't been treated. It's really important to know that every child is unique, and systems do not necessarily generalize completely, although there is clear research about the common types of challenges for students who have experienced trauma. A good deal of this presentation is going to be about what we're doing about that. Is this why? Next. But first, just a little bit more context setting. So if you think about the data in Vermont right now, one in eight children have had more than three more than three types of adverse family experiences. And just as a context, that's about 800 classrooms of 20 kids. So that's a lot of children who are experiencing sort of a number of adverse things in their lives that are creating challenges for them as they work towards being learners. You can't see this very well, I'm going to read it to you. These are the most common adverse family experiences that exist in Vermont. 11% is living with someone who is depressed, mentally ill or suicidal. Then, living with someone who has a drug or alcohol problem is at 15%. Not having enough food to eat or stable housing is at 25. Divorced or separated parents are at 26. These are the four most common adverse family experiences, and they're more common in Vermont than they are in the rest of the nation. If you're interested in more information about adverse childhood experiences, you can Google the ACEs study, and it will give you a lot of information about what's happening both across the nation and certainly in Vermont. And you can learn more about how people have started to measure trauma and toxic stress for kids. But the most important part about tonight is to start to talk a little bit about what we can do about it because we're not, this is not a static situation. Children's brains are malleable and flexible, and there's a lot we can do.
So after hearing some of that depressing data, I was pleasantly surprised when the presentation we were listening to turned to the fact that there's a lot we can do. And as longstanding CCSU board members, you've heard us talk many, many hours about the needs of our students and how they're changing. Principals have reported and we've reported. So we want to be proactive and responsive. That's the most important action we can take right now. And there's actually six areas that we can consider doing so. One is understanding stress and trauma. Two is practicing cultural humility and responsiveness. Three is establishing safety and predictability. Four is fostering compassionate and dependable relationships. Five is promoting resilience and social-emotional learning. And the sixth is to facilitate empowerment and collaboration. So you've probably heard some of those words before in our general framework of how we're structuring our continuous improvement plan. And so we've been using the MTSS connection. So we're using tiered approaches based on student needs. We're looking at our instructional programming and intervention that's research-based. We're certainly assessing and reviewing that data in our data teams in our schools and engaging in high-quality professional development on this topic. This is going to take a systems approach, and so we're going to use an MTSS framework in connection with that approach.
I'd like to take a moment to just give you a definition of what each of these are and then talk about the incredible work of the school leaders that they are really spearheading in reference to the work. So, understanding stress and trauma is a critical piece for all educators who are working with kids who have these experiences. Can really be liberating, finding explanations for why you experience the kinds of things you do in a classroom for a child who has been through trauma or toxic stress is important. All schools have offered trauma training across the school district. Joelle Van Linck, who is a PhD psychologist, is extremely skilled and well-recognized in New England as a trauma expert, has offered a lot of training throughout the schools. And next year, she's slated to work specifically with CTE, ADL, and Westford for this coming year. Doesn't mean some other schools won't offer training too, but there has already been quite a bit scheduled. Howard Center has also provided quite a bit of training in our system on this topic. It's important to note that all paraeducators across CCSU have had a full two days of training on the topic. And we just talked about this at our educational leadership team meeting at the last meeting in reference to thinking about this summer and what are the further training needs, what are the system needs around learning about this topic across CCSU. It's important to remember that we come from diverse cultural groups and experience different kinds of trauma and stressors, we react to them differently. And when we respond with humility and without judgment, we make others feel understood. The focus around this piece and where we can sort of touch it in the system, restorative, and this is not a comprehensive list, and principals should feel free to add others if you want to, but we've talked quite a bit right now about restorative justice and thinking about restorative justice as a model of considering when wrongs are done as opposed to punishment. We're working on that topic at USP High School, at ADL, EMS is very involved, other principals are talking about that. There's been training in Hiawatha and a couple of other places. ADL held some community forums specifically around this topic this year. There are many cultural dinners and celebrations trying to bring multicultural perspectives. There are family engagement offerings at all of our schools that are critical. We offer an assistance program for employees who need supports in these areas too. I think, just to stop for a moment, that's important too. This is not just about our students all the time because everyone comes with their own experiences. And if someone has had a traumatic experience and comes up to something that is triggering for them as an adult, you can see those cycles play out too. So it's definitely not a one-sided conversation.
Did you guys want to add anything on that?
I think the only thing I mentioned is that also along those lines, thinking about the adults that are interacting with students, Joelle does a lot of training around emotional fatigue and how do we take care of ourselves because we can't just decide we're too tired to deal with it. We still need to make sure that we're available for students, but we also need to manage it in a way that makes sense and that keeps us healthy and moving forward. So really thinking about our own capacity for emotional fatigue and what to do about it is really also very important, especially for the leadership in the schools.
Erin?
Yeah, sure.
So you talked about how Joelle was working with ADL, CTE, and Westford. What additional for Summit in Hiawatha?
She's done some work there already, and also the Howard Center has done a good deal of work. Because we have social workers in each school, they also offer training. And all of the paras across all of the schools have been trained as well. It's, you know, there's that balance between the sort of organic growth of what people really are ready for and interested in versus where the focus happens at any given time. But what I can say is over the last three years, every school has offered training. It hasn't always been with Joelle. Kim Asom has done a good deal of training from the Howard Center. And so, it's, these are just, it's just a highlight. It doesn't necessarily speak to things that aren't happening in other places.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any support that are extended to the parents?
Yes, absolutely. We have, the social, school social work has really focused in on family support. It's a great question because what's really also important to know is that as we work with children who are experiencing mental health issues, just focusing on a child that's part of a full-family construct is not the best way to go. You really want to look at family treatment. And so, we have a lot of collaboration with Howard Center through social workers and then also through their family-based community services program to get families the support they need. Could we use more? Sure. Yes. But there absolutely is opportunity for supports for families as well as for the kids.
Hey, so could you give an example of where we're seeing classroom shift in practice? Because in my experience, it's one thing to take in the training, which is a lot of information. And, you know, you can develop empathy, you can develop knowledge, and you can develop the ability to recognize a situation. It's a whole other deep layer of work to actually change instructional practice, classroom management techniques. So I'd be curious to hear examples of where we're seeing that practice change.
Sure. So, without getting too specific, I, you know, certainly in the elementary schools, I have watched classroom teachers engage with consultation with people who have expertise in this area and build systems and structures in their classrooms. It's actually a nice segue into this slide, which is the importance of safety and predictability. So really identifying space alignment in the classroom to make separate spaces for different pieces, different structures where, for example, students need visual support inside of like, what kind of timeframe am I in? Am I in my writing time? Am I in my math time? Thinking about visual schedules, I watch that on a regular basis be implemented. We've done quite a bit of training around functional behavior assessment as well, and so teachers are very involved in that process and then are responsible and supportive for implementing specific behavior plan. Plans, we have, like I've seen, peace chairs, and we have groups that are sort of friendship groups for lunches, for example. We also use expected and unexpected behavior language consistently in some of the schools where that's taken from Michelle Garcia Winner's work in reference to social cognition. We use the Alert Program, which is another intervention that produces a toolbox for kids that they can take with them into the classroom to help them with regulation. I could keep going. I, you know, I have seen a good deal of practice in the schools in reference to these topics. I also will say that there are times where things get escalated to a point where some of those things don't work and we need to implement other strategies. We have a series of supports available to kids who really have experienced a good deal of trauma that has created a level of disability for them and what kind of plans we build around them are very individualized for those kids.
Tier three.
Tier three, yeah. So as I just said, predictability and reducing that sense of threat in schools for kids who have these experiences is really important. We do that through school-wide scheduling, consultation and assessment that I just mentioned. One of the things that we've done this year is, people have really intentionally tried to reduce the number of PD days that teachers are out of the building and tried to think about PD differently for teachers. And that's been helpful to stabilize for kids the person who is their person rather than sort of shifting that out. And also, some of those trauma-informed practices I had talked about, all schools have a school-wide crisis team, and they're all trained in crisis prevention, which is another aspect of our systems and structures.
And just to add to that, you'll hear later in your local board meetings, all of our schools have also practiced evacuation and relocation drills at the K8 level. The most recent this morning, ADL at 8:00. And I think it's tremendously predictable when kids know this is where we go, this is how we go there, this is where we are, and how we get there. And to also see the responsiveness of our community as far as first responders are concerned, to know that if there's a problem, people know who to call, trucks arrive, and it's been done in a very calm and predictable manner. And I think seeing the students know how to move, it's the only place, evacuation is only taught in schools. There's no other time you'll ever learn about evacuating. And it's a lifelong skill, whether they're in a movie theater or in a church. There's always times now that we've learned the need to know how to relocate and evacuate. So, there's been a great deal of work on behalf of our principals to organize this work. And, you know, we've tested our 911 systems and our radios to make sure we have good communication and skills in that area. And actually, we have Rob Evans from the state here tonight to speak with the Westford and the PC board about their evacuation drills and the work that he sees throughout the state in this area. Thank you, Kellyanne.
You're welcome. Compassionate relationships are critical. Dependability for kids who have these experiences is also critical. Trust can help us be calm, and you can think about it in your own lives when you're with someone that you don't trust versus with someone who you do. And the difference is you experience internally in those circumstances. Lori mentioned compassion fatigue trainings, that's something that we do. This work is not easy for leaders, for teachers, for paras, for all of us. So that is something that exists for folks. We do a good deal of school-wide community work. It goes to all of the work that the principals and their teachers do around building classroom community and spending time making sure that their classroom is a community and has structure to it. Congratulations to Westford, who just had a vote to move forward with a formal PBIS system, and Summit Street School is in there going into their third year of PBIS implementation. PBIS stands for Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports. And that is a very school-wide system for addressing community and engaging in compassionate relationships and recognizing kids for positives. And then you can also take a look at all of the action plans. They each have a whole section around safe and respectful learning environments from this perspective.
So promoting resilience and social-emotional learning. Erin has spoke about how trauma can derail not only the physiology of the brain, but also the development of emotional regulation, social information processing, and problem-solving skills. So what can we do to build resilience? Well, we can work on building skills in emotional self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, and responsible decision-making. And those things are being worked on through PBIS at Summit and Westford. The Alert Curriculum that Erin mentioned, social thinking, skills streaming. We've also been engaged with some guidance lessons with health curriculum and mindfulness. And you have graciously provided social work with each of our schools. It's a tremendous resource. And then to facilitate empowerment and collaboration, you've all experienced or know what it feels like if there's a loss of power and control and that feeling of helplessness. And so, we're prepared for and given real opportunities to make choices for ourselves in our care. We feel empowered and promote our own wellness, the wellness of others by following some of the best practices in the field right now. There's restorative justice at ADL, EMS, and many teachers are being trained. I will say that this hasn't been something that has been an area that we require, but instead, it's bubbled up from our faculty to seek out this kind of work and this training. We continue to look at policy work to further this training and think about shifting from a punitive environment to a restorative environment. And what does that look like at the policy level? And then, working with differentiation so that students get what they need. And it doesn't mean it's the same, but it creates that equity of access. The teacher-student relationship is imperative in the social-emotional learning opportunities that we provide on a daily basis. So whether you're on the board that's about to dissolve or on the new board, I think that we can look at the future with considering restoration and tolerance instead of punishment through policy development. We can remember that equity doesn't mean equal or sameness, but rather all students getting what they need to succeed. And we have to create environments that are trauma-informed to support all students so that they can excel. In the old frame of a rising tide lifts all ships, and we have to make sure to be cognizant of the needs of our students as we move forward. So we'll open it up for six minutes of questions. Yes? Yeah. So, are we or have we considered tracking data around suspensions, you know, like planning learn referrals so that we can actually drill down and see across grade level, across classroom where, you know, we should see a, you know, dramatic decline in that?
In our admin inform, which is the data system that we have, we've actually developed a series of reports that are social-emotional wellness constructive data that can be that can be looked at in a report frame that helps us do that. So it includes discipline, it includes attendance, it includes nurses' visits, it includes a variety of different data points that would help us know where a student might be functioning socially and emotionally. And then also the experience for schools who are fully implementing PBIS comes with a very significant data review of when those issues happen, what time of day do they happen, where do they happen? And tracking that data and doing a monthly data dig to ensure that we're really thinking about where do students understand better about the expectations and are able to show those skills versus, you know, that time before lunch.
Right.
And we could do some targeted instruction during that time. So yes, absolutely, the data is really important and is reviewed regularly. We have some pretty good data around suspension rates for kids with disabilities. It's pretty low. We meet the target for the APR, which is the annual report for special education data in reference to that. So yeah, the data is critical and we do review it regularly.
And the second part of our school action plans is focused on positive and safe learning experiences for students in learning environments that ensure that. So our principals are constantly looking at targets to ensure that through their discipline data, not only, like what was that suspension about? What was that removal about? So that we're tracking rationale behind some of the occurrences.
You know, are we looking at that across the district? Like are we seeing, wow, we have a hotspot around, you know, fourth grade or ninth grade or, you know?
We're getting better at it. We're getting better at it.
I was just going to say that, like.
Each year we take out our data and we look at those areas. I think it's more focused at the school level versus the district level, but there is a need to improve that at the district level through our continuous improvement plan.
And this is not to say that this work is done and we're great, right? Like, we have circumstances where situations take place and the power struggle becomes very real and it escalates. And, you know, it's hard work to stay really calm, cool and collected during a really difficult situation that is a result of some of these things. So, and the data work, we could do more of that. You know, how often are we looking at it as an ELT as a whole? Not very frequently. So there is definitely more improvement to be had.
Do you envision putting in place or exploring the regard suspensions to start going towards in-school suspensions versus actual suspensions?
We actually have, we actually do look at both.
Well, I'll bring an example for discussion. I mean, if a student is not going to classes and petting classes, why would you reward the student with a suspension from school?
I think part of the reason we're talking about restorative justice is to think about what it looks like to repair instead of punish. And as you start to think about what it looks like to repair a circumstance like that, as opposed to whether you're in an in-school punishment or an out-of-school punishment and what that really does for behavior change is really, from my perspective, the most important conversation. Can we talk about in-school versus out-of-school? Yeah, we can talk about that. The likelihood that either one of those creates change that's longstanding is pretty low, except for those kids where, you know, they do something once and they get in trouble and they get suspended. And, you know, they are, they're experiencing these things because of longstanding trauma experiences. Suspension doesn't treat trauma. And so, you know, I think we have to think about how we do our work to make sure that we are addressing things in a way that makes it better, not worse.
One last question. I'm sort of curious, I realize I'm new, so if there's something in place, let me know. But is there something in place that goes from identifying, like children who are in situations like this, to ongoing? Where do we need to say bring in a social worker or contact DCF? Like, how does that get integrated in the schools? Like, is part of what you're doing here also identifying ongoing situations?
Yeah, absolutely. And that is a critical component of our work is understanding our children and what's happening for them and why things are happening for them. Where we uncover or something comes up that indicates a report needs to be made, we report there very quickly. We also have a lot of collaborative work we do with DCF when DCF is already in the mix. And so they become part of the team. We, I don't know what our data is on reference to the number of DCF calls we make in a year. That would be an interesting piece of data to consider.
Yeah. It is like this year.
Yep.
With the change in law.
There's been some changes in the law that have, I've definitely made more this year too because of some of those changes. There's some duplicate reporting requirements that exist now for people based on the new law. But yeah, you know, and then referral to social work services, referral to the, like a friendship group or whatever intervention we may feel needs to take place. We have our educational support teams in place to help us create those referral tracks. And it really is about an individual student and what they need. And we keep our eyes on every kid to the greatest extent possible. We try to know them, we try to understand what's happening and try to meet their needs. Do we meet them all? You know, we could, we're working on it. We work hard to do that. That involves a lot of interagency engagement, not just DCF, but Howard Center and other AHS entities. So yes, I don't know if that answers the question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just a quick one. So the first statistic of one in eight students in Vermont, do we have an idea of what those ratios look like for our district?
No, I don't. That is an estimate that is based off of the ACEs study that I referenced earlier, that's a statewide study. So we don't have that research specifically for our school district. The ACEs study was actually done out of pediatrician offices, not out of school districts. And so we don't have that data set specifically tied to CCSU.
Okay.
With that in mind, is there regions of the state that are higher than others? Is it more metropolitan, more in the country setting? Or is this?
I grew up in the kingdom and I got to say that. I had a lot more friends growing up in the kingdom where issues like, you know, difficulties in school coming from the end of abuse than I've noticed to people in here in County. But that's just.
Well, you know, it's interesting. I mean, I think depending on what you've been through in your life and who you've known in your life, you come with your sort of frame about what this conversation means. And, you know, what one person might look like or engage, how they engage. And, you know, I mean, I think we, what the poverty rates are, those are all things that tend to bubble up. But the reality is that that trauma does not separate itself by poverty. It doesn't separate itself by where you live. And so I think our work is always to come to every child regardless of those kinds of issues and try to meet their needs, no matter what those demographics say. And there has not been a lot of comparison done in any of these studies about this area or that area. There was a recent set of data around the opia issue that came up. But I think from my perspective, that's probably as far as I've seen in reference to this place or that place. Poverty creates stress.
Well, there's also looking at the figures where the bottom two, one I would dare say is probably related to economics. If you have a significant job loss of a mill town where the mill closes, I mean, that's, that's stress that's going to be felt throughout. And is there, I'm sure there's probably a reaction to what may happen or going to happen in preparation.
Right. And I know some amazing families who are struggling financially, like you sort of, and they're incredible. So it's like, how do, you know, you can't really associate it with that. There are some phenomenal parents who I've met in my time that are homeless. So, you know, there's that sort of bias towards poverty equals. And I think we always have to be careful of that. And yet stress happens in families and can trend towards, sort of the more stress you have, the more likely your family is experiencing the stressful factors and your child is experiencing stress. Domestic violence is something that didn't pop up on the list of most prevalent in Vermont. It's certainly on the list, right? So, but I wouldn't tag one place or another necessarily at this point. I just don't have the data to do that.
So if anyone has further questions, why don't, why don't you send them my way and I'll get Erin to send out answers to the board so we can move on to the next section of our meeting. But thank you, Erin. Thank you, Judy.
Thanks, Erin.
Yep. So, yeah, we'll enter into recess at 7:10 and reconvene in five minutes in each respective location for each of the local boards to meet.